September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, Laramie Planning Commission meeting. Roll call. Ryan, please.
Evans is absent. Mattamore?
Here.
Heiser White, absent. O'Toole?
Here.
Prusilik?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
And Moody?
Here.
That is five present, two absent.
All right. Are there any changes to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Tom, second?
Second.
Jake, second. All those in favor of the agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, the agenda's good. Is there a, um, a, a motion to approve the minutes from September ninth, twenty twenty-four as presented? And I'm assuming that Jake and Tom, Donald and Sylvie were present at that?
On the ninth?
On the ninth?
I was out of town at the one.
So that only gives us three. Jake, Donald and Sylvie? For the approval of the minutes?
Yeah, that's correct. So we can't.
Okay, so we'll postpone that.
Was Jan, was Jan there that? We'd have to wait until Jan is a, a meeting, so.
So we'll, we'll postpone that, um, that item for next meeting?
Yes.
All right, very good. Okay, so next, citizen comments on non-agenda-related items, topics that no action can be taken, but we're here to listen. Anybody out there? Seeing none, we will, no, no public comments. Uh, next item, Planning Commission and staff reports and comments. Derek and Philip, anything on your mind?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I brought my laptop up here because I have a quote from a citizen that attended one of our most recent farmers market outreach efforts. I thought it really spoke well to it. It says, first of all, I'll, I'll just read the whole thing too. It was great to talk to the farmers market last Friday. I appreciate all the information shared. Like to say that a city of Laramie Booth at the market is a great idea. It provides a very relaxed way to talk to city officials, so. I think this is, uh, and then he had two questions, um, that I need to get back to him on, but I just bring that up because that's exactly what we're going. Kind of a relaxed atmosphere where there's not a agenda that are a hot-button topic that people need to respond to. It's been going very well, but I heard you guys talk about it before the meeting, so you're well aware this Friday is our last one. Uh, so that's announcement number one. Announcement number two is our Bike Month is rounding out and the final event will be held this Friday at the First Street Plaza. Not if there's any early risers, but it's from seven AM to nine AM Bike to Work, uh, Day. So we'll have some light refreshments and maybe even the fire pit on at the First Street Plaza, so just saying.
Oh, if it's cold?
Well, it is getting cold.
It is officially cold in the morning.
So anyways, we have those two announcements. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Philip. Um, any, anything amongst us, uh, commission members?
I, yep, I will be recusing myself from the second, uh, item six B I I on the agenda.
Okay, so that will be, we, so we don't have any comments, but that'll be in the disclosures, expertise, communications, and protect the conflict of interest?
Right, yeah.
Okay, so Jake will recuse himself. I'm assuming that we don't really have anything, uh, out there for, for comments. Everybody okay? All right. Um, first order of business is preliminary plat, uh, PP dash twenty-four dash zero-two preliminary plat for breeze through car wash addition. Philip?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Not too long ago, you heard about the conditions permit associated with the breeze through car wash that's being proposed here at the corner twenty-sixth and Grand. So that was approved and this now is the applicant's, um, desire to plat the lot because it's previously unplugged. So it previous, so we need to plaid it before doing a site plan before the site can be developed. So the site, uh, the site, as mentioned, about an acre located there, Grand Avenue, East of Twenty-Sixth Street. We have previous land uses included a fuel station, medical office, and then an abandoned retail sales sta- establishment. I'll just mention that a rezoning is not being proposed here. Uh, the conditional use application took care of that. So now the proposed car wash is a permitted use, um, in both of the zoning districts. So it's going to stay split zone after it becomes one parcel. Uh, there's a little additional information there on the actual car wash, but it's not really what we're discussing tonight. We're just talking about plating. We have the applicant here, um, as well with his representative, um, if you have any questions, um, about the plating. I'd like to keep into that since it is, the proposed car wash is a permitted use. But we're actually just trying to plat this lot to prime it for this development. It complies also with the future land use in the area, um, which is suburban commercial. Uh, the major street plan for that area, the lots adjacent to Grand Avenue, Principal Arterial Street. And, uh, there's not any access being proposed off of Grand. Traffic impact analysis is going to be, uh, reviewed in the site plan process further for this car wash. The Public Works had no concerns with this, I mean, given the size of the developed number of trips it's going to generate. They feel comfortable, um, recommending the plating, the site plan and the accesses that will, that will come at a later stage. Let's jump into the analysis of required findings for final flats. Um, preliminary, so number one preliminary flat consists of prior approvals. As mentioned, there is a conditions permit in place for this, um, for this lot to allow for the car wash use in a B-one zoning district. Uh, finding two, the preliminary class consistent with the conference of plan, other applicable plans. I mentioned how it is, um, in line with the future land use in the area. And then there's several other, um, se- several other findings under, under there as far as, but it's being an infill lot. A lot of the services are right there. It's on Grand, so, um, nothing out of the ordinary there. Number three, the preliminary plaque complies with use and development standards. Again, I will probably defer to the applicant on many of these, uh, from staff standpoint, being as it is an infill development site. You know, we're, we, we don't see an issue with the amount of traffic it's going to generate or the use there and the effect of noise, glare, other off-site impacts. Parking, parking and off-street loading, that's all going to be taken care of onsite. There are some on-street parking spots, um, on Garfield that are being proposed, which again, in our, we, we will address that during the site planning process, but, um, from staff's perspective, it's not going to cause any more of an, uh, than any of the previous issues, so. Parks and open space, commercial developments, as you know, don't require parking loop in your open space dedication, so nothing there. So yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll go ahead and jump down to the conditions. We are recommending approval of this preliminary plat where we're recommending this body, uh, recommend approval of city council for the breeze through car wash, preliminary plat. We have a couple of boilerplate, so to speak, conditions there that are, um, designed for most preliminary class. All of these need to be met before the final plaque is approved. Um, there are some alternatives there, but our recommendation is approval and gladly answer any questions. And then perhaps give the applicant a chance to, uh, provide input as well.
Thanks, Philip. Um, any questions among commissioners for Philip? I, 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 go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
The only, the only question I had probably addressed in the site plan, because, uh, we're taking the drainage out onto Garfield and then running downstream to an inlet, is that the, what the proposal is?
I believe so, um, but I will draw your attention to what we, what, what staff's recommendation is there for the drainage plan? I mean, it was approved. I mean, city staff, as in Public Works, is in favor of what's been proposed. But the finer detail we hashed out in the.
In the site, that's not in our purview then.
Donald?
So my only comment is this has been a bit of an eyesore for years and years, so it is really nice to see this area being developed.
Um, uh, similar to Tom, but this is probably a site plan thing to, to work out, but just since there are residences to the south across Garfield. Any, uh, be careful on, on glare, um, you know, nighttime operation, whether there's, uh, nighttime glare for the residents, uh, moving across. Just a heads up, um, make sure that that's dealt with properly.
Yeah, Honorable Chair, just answer that a little bit. I mean, it's in the site plan process for these interfaces in the city that go from business to residential. There is a higher level of, um, you know, requirements for, for lighting, I know for sure. You know, it's, it's, you know, it can't exceed a certain amount of feet. I can't tell you off the top of my head. I know when you're calling from B-two down to R-three, it's different than if it was in a exclusively B-two area. Just adjoining other business lots, so. But, uh, of course, we'll be addressed and there's, there's, uh, we, we all, we have code that speaks to that, to that interface between residential and business.
Right. I am kind of curious if a, if a residence, even if they do it to code, um, and the residents across Garfield say, oh, man, the, the lights are just killing me here. I, um, it's really bothersome. It, wha- what, what is the, the avenue of, of dialogue that, that, that happens or any?
Well, I can, I can just, you know, pull what I know about lighting out. I mean, it's, um, floodlights aren't permitted anywhere. Like all, all the lights have to be shining down.
Down, fair.
Like it's not, even in residential areas, you can't have a floodlight on back of your house.
Oh, yeah? All the time?
That's surprising, right? But, uh, the same, I mean, the photometric plan is required for all site plans. And, you know, the amount of foot candles that are seen or measured at the property line and certainly be beyond the property line are regulated per code, so, um, I mean, that, that's how that will be addressed. I mean, we, we have had instances where residents have called and, you know, um, and we've had to go look at it. Actually, the lighting that was installed turns out to be different than what was approved, so that had to be.
Gotcha.
Taken care of, but, but yeah, we have, we have code that should be written.
Okay, all right, very good. Yeah, Donald?
Yeah, I think there's an apartment complex across the street directly from that lot, a smaller car, yeah, I think it's a two-story apartment complex, so that needs to be taken into account.
All right, any other questions from the commission or Philip? Well, if you're done, then if the applicant wants to come up and, and say a few words, that would be great. Thank you.
I'm Diane Frederickson from D-ven Consulting LLC, then planning, architect. This is John Eckman, owner of Breeze Through Car Wash. We also have the owners of the property here tonight, um, or this evening, we'd like to, uh, just to let you know that they're here too. So we, we presented the whole project to this group not that long ago, so I was not planning on doing another presentation. But I don't mind addressing some of your comments if you'd like, if you'd like me to.
Sure, sure.
I know we're here for the preliminary plat, um, but in terms of glare, um, for the neighbors, the, the lighting that we have will be down directional and it will be the code, the code requires that there's zero foot candles beyond the limits of our, of our property. And in terms of headlight glare, I think is what is, can be more bothersome for, for neighbors. Um, there's some very specific, um, um, codes that you have that have to do with making sure the drive aisles in the parking lots are screened and to a three-foot height so that, um, you can make sure that the, the glare is not happening, not only to the neighbors, but any ongoing traffic. And then on the south side, when the traffic comes in, it's facing east, not south. And when they're coming around, then they, they face south, but then there's that backyard, a lot of driveway, so that, that should eliminate that problem. The other thing is they're, we're open for the most part during daylight hours.
Okay.
And so I think that covers, that covers that as, as best I can. The drainage, we looked at the drainage, um, we evaluated the drainage, we did a preliminary drainage report. And we're, we're going to handle drainage just the same way as our neighbor, um, the coffee shop right next to us. As a matter of fact, we use their drainage report as a template for our drainage report. So drainage will be, if it's not filtered through in the landscape itself, um, there's quite a bit of backyard between the, the parking lot and the street. It'll be directed into the street on both sides. So that's how that, that's how that works. There's really no infrastructure. We wish, our, our engineers, like, man, I wish there was, there was a, um, an inlet there, but there's not. And so it'll be directed that way.
All right, thank you.
Um, did you have any other questions that you wanted us to answer while we're here? We're happy to.
No, I think we're, oh, oh, hi, Sylvie, thank, you're on.
Thank you. Uh, how, how much below the maximum noise threshold will the vacuum cleaners be?
So actually, the vacuum cleaners don't, don't generate much noise. It's, um, themselves, yeah, the, the, it's, it's below the, I don't know what the, whatever the threshold is, but, um, you think of your vacuum cleaner at home, it has a, uh, our system has a central producer with a, a muffler on it. So the, the noise coming out the end of the vacuum hose, you think of your vacuum at, at home, the noise that comes from the vacuum hose is not very loud. Most of it's from the producer and the producer is, uh, has a large muffler on it, so it's, it's not, um, it's not like the, the old, old canister vacuums that you'd see at a self-service car wash, they're, they're much more proof than that. So the noise from our vacuum system is really quite low.
Like well below the, the noise threshold?
We have.
To be honest, the vacuums have never been an issue.
We, we haven't really, I mean, we.
I would say yes.
Yes, well below, but we don't know how many points below.
I mean, I think that's pretty important. I, I was around one not long ago and I, I thought, this is loud. I mean, could someone? Will, will those neighbors be able to keep their windows open at night?
Phil, Philip, um, maybe you can address that.
I'm sorry, pardon me, uh, as mentioned previously, Mr. Chair, this is for the plating of the property. We do have requirements per code for off-site impacts, but all that will be addressed in a site plan, please. Tonight, I, I would recommend that we keep the comments just plating the property rather than the use that's.
Right, and, but, but I, I, I think that this is sort of a, an opportunity for commission members to, to bring out some initial concerns that we have so that in the site plan process and the final plat process that, you know, that those, that those things are just in, in the frontal lobes as, as you go through the process, so.
Conversation we had, just to jump in, this was a conversation we had when we did the CUP application, the conditional use permit. It was a question that came up then, um, and our response at that time was we have fifteen sites, none of which have a problem with that. And we have other sites that have, that have residences right there. And so it, it hasn't, it hasn't come across as a problem. We know that our equipment needs the code based on the mechanical specifications that we have, but I, I can't tell you how much better it is than that, than, than code. Does that, does that help?
Sylvie?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and I'm sure that in the process, the city will, you know, make sure that, that that's, whatever thresholds are, are, are met or at least acknowledged as part of a performance-based approval, you know, down the road. Cool. Well, thank you very much for, for, for coming and answering, uh, our, our pesky questions. All right, well, best of luck. Um, are any further questions from commissioners, uh, public? Is there any public comment on, on this, um, this plat? Seeing none? Final, final questions, comments from the commission?
My only concern with the drainage was the inlets on the other side of Twenty-Sixth Street, so the water would have to cross, across street to get there. But that's, that's for the stormwater people to deal with, not us. We've had enough stormwater.
All right. Well, is, is there, is there a motion out there?
I move.
And, and if you do, Tom, just add on the recommendation and subject to staff recommended conditions.
I move that we approve, uh, we, to recommend approval to the city council for PP dash two-four dash zero-two preliminary plat for breeze through car wash addition based on findings of fact and staff conditions and conclusion of law.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Jake. Um, final comments, questions? Um, roll call, vote, please.
Evans is absent. Mattamore?
Aye.
Heiser White is absent. O'Toole?
Aye.
Prusilik?
Aye.
Schneider?
Yes.
And Moody?
Yes.
That is five yeses, zero noes, and two absent.
Okay, motion passes for, for preliminary plat. Best of luck. Right on. Um, next item. Jake will.
Other side of the wall.
Put a new hat, a new hat on. The item is, uh, is TA dash twenty-four dash oh-four, an ordinance amending Laramie Municipal Code Title fifteen dot two-eight to update the definition of, quote, shop sign shop and modify table fifteen dot ten dash one to reflect the newly expanded use of sign shops. Philip, again?
Yes, Honorable Chair, members of the commission. Thanks for the opportunity to present the proposed amendments to the UDC, uh, sections fifteen, ten, ten, and fifteen, twenty-eight, thirty. This text amendment proposal originates from Ellicott Ridge Builders and Design. We have the applicant from, uh, from that outfit here this evening. Uh, Mr. Bryce Johnson, and the amendment seeks to modify the definition of sign shop and to adjust the table of allowed uses to better capture the full scope of services that contemporary sign shops may offer. So over time, the traditional concept of a sign shop has expanded, um, to include a wide range of digital and creative services, including digital marketing and production technologies that were not previously captured by the code as it reads now. So why is this amendment important? First, the amendment to the definition of sign shop reflects the growing intersection of traditional sign-making services and digital design and production techniques. In today's business, a sign shop isn't just a place where you go buy signs, but also a place that will, you know, produce custom graphics and maybe do a little bit of manufacturing to provide, um, provide those services. So the expanded definition proposed by the applicant, supported by staff, acknowledges that these businesses often require more than just the retail storefront, the retail aspect. As mentioned, they may include other small-scale production activities like cutting wood, plastic, while maintaining a relatively low impact in terms of off-site, off-site, um, impacts normally associated with larger manufacturing, um, services and businesses. So that's why I want to be clear that we're, you know, sign, th- this isn't following exactly what code says about light manufacturing, which we had a discussion of, does sign shop fall under that? No, it doesn't. We believe it falls into a different category that is even lighter impact and off-site impact than that, what would be defined under light manufacturing definition. So this, this, um, the table of allowed uses, that's the second part, the definition's the first part, um, the definition of the sign shop. Where will they be permitted? They do follow, however, the permitted status and the conditional use permitted statuses in both the, um, at, it, it follows the limited manufacturing everywhere except in the downtown commercial district where a conditional use is, is recommended. And this largely has to do with the scale of a sign shop and what it could entail. Yes, I mean, at, under the definition, a sign shop could mean, you know, a, you know, a tiny eight-hundred-square-foot shop that maybe does some cutting and pasting, but it also could include something much larger. We want to be sure that outside of our normal business districts that would allow it, um, that, that they would be permitted in. In the downtown commercial, given the limited space and the limited amount of land in Laramie that is dedicated to, uh, that downtown commercial zoning district, we wanted this board to actually be the, have the final say on sign shops in the downtown commercial area. That's, that's why it reads like it does in your packet. So, uh, this amendment does align with the broader goals of the city's comprehensive plan, which emphasizes fostering economic growth, supporting innovation, and adapting to evolving business models. Uh, the changes proposed today support these goals by creating regulatory environment that does, is flexible towards, um, new, uh, newly defined uses and, um, new, new businesses. As the, at, at the time of this report, we received no public comments, um, for this, uh, for this tax amendment. It was advertising boomerang, um, so we, we have not received anything to date. In conclusion, staff believes the, the amendments before you are, are in alignment with best planning practices, but also we'll keep our code up to date, uh, with the realities of today's business environment. And I'm glad to answer any questions, and Mr. Johnson is also here as the applicant, if, if he would like to take the stand.
Donald, I mean, Tom.
Well, not, not a question, more of a comment. When the U, UDC and its predecessor, the UBC, and going back to the beginnings of, uh, code, sign shop was a sheet metal shop, paint shop, they made neon lights, they cut steel, welded, and did all kinds of stuff like that. We don't do that anymore, you know, so, yeah, I, I think this is. So, yeah, I, I think this is overdue and it's a good change to the, to the code. And we're kind of outdated on that, so keep up with the times, should I say.
All right, any other comments from commissioners? So it, it, it's kind of just like a, 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 a print shop, or at least that's kind of, it's a lot more than a print shop. But, but a print shop can do a lot of things according to what the customer wants and the equipment that's available in, in the shop. So, yeah, anyways, um, thank you, Philip. And if the applicant wants to maybe educate us a little bit more on what a, what a sign shop is, in, in, in your case, and that this was something you, you, you proposed some business and was coming and was bumping up into, into regulatory language problems? That's sort of how this got started?
Yeah, so Chair and commission members, thank you. I'm Bryce with Ellicott Bridge and this is, this starts with American Paintbrush. British purchased the old Napa building and they're ready, in the process of trying to renovate that and do some different things within that, bring their business, American Paintbrush down to there, to the old Napa building, okay? Which is in the downtown district. The old, or the existing code, the way it's read, as Philip was explaining, does not allow that because sign shop calls in limited manufacturing, right? Which goes to the old terminal, cutting, welding, all of those things. What British business does, American Paintbrush and businesses like that are more design graphics, printing. They have, you see their signs around town, some of the big signs, those are made by somebody else, right? And then shipped in. They put their graphics film sticker on it, right? And then the contractor picks it up and the contractor installs it, right? So they're not even doing any of the labor of the installation or its fabrication, just the design, printing and the graphics side of it. So the nice part of updating this, it gives planning an avenue to look at these types of businesses and approve them and let other buildings directly renovated and move along in a conditional use permit. So there's kind of a second step that we're able to go through. In short, that's kind of it. If there's anything else on like what our business does.
All right. Any questions from commissioners? Well, well, great then. Glad you guys are trying to do something with the Napa, the Napa building. That's, that's wonderful. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question for Derek. I didn't, I've recognized you, but I didn't know where from. I spent through the rifle range, a lot of money with American Paintbrush for buying a lot of signs. Can I still vote on this? I mean, I don't.
Well, if you don't, we don't have enough people to.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. We don't have enough people. We'd have to postpone it.
It's, it's completely up to you, but I, I think that you're, you can be impartial in your judgment if you believe you can as well.
All right, good.
All right. Okay. Well, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public that wants to comment on this? Seeing none? Is there a motion? Donald?
So I move to recommend that the city council approve amendments to fifteen dot ten dot zero ten and fifteen dot twenty eight dot zero three zero of Laramie Municipal Code based on findings of fact and conclusions of law as recommended by staff and is shown in attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Madam Moore. Final discussion by commission? Seeing none? Roll call vote, please.
Evans is absent. Madam Moore?
Aye.
Is there white absent? O'Toole?
Aye.
Priscillik?
Aye.
Schneider absent. Moody?
Aye.
That is four yeses, zero no's and three absent.
Okay. Best of luck. Right on. So that finishes up everything that we've got on the docket. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Tom, second?
Second.
Second from Donald. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. We are adjourned as commission, planning commission. Wow, thirty-five minutes, thirty-six.
Why, that's a record.